Well, good morning. On Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, November 3rd. We'll start with introductions. I'm Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Annabel Harmio, Commissioner.
Zan Ogero, Commissioner.
Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Nancy Fordy, County Council.
Helen Karasch, Public Information Counsel.
All right, and those here joining us by go to meeting.
Rita Farley, Board of Commissioners.
Kate Porsha, Benton County, Cora, Benton County, Acton, Salona.
Charlie Fountain, Public Health.
Lynn McKee, Federal Government.
Suzanne Lozman, Health Department.
Jen Ambul, Senior Financial Analyst.
Lilia Neville, Board of Commissioner staff.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
All right, and it looks like Danielle Brown has just joined us. Morning Danielle.
Morning.
I think that's everybody. So, are there any announcements? Hearing none, we'll go on to, are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll go on to item number three, review and approve our agenda. Will you hear any additions or corrections? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item four, our work session, update from the EOC and DOC. We usually start with Brian Lee. Are you, are you ready, Brian? We'll let Brian come in later. Do you want to start us off, Charlie Fountain?
I wonder if they're hearing.
Sure. No. Thank you, Commissioner. On the epidemiology side, our numbers locally have been dropping slowly since our peak at the end of September, early October. People seem to be doing a pretty good job out there. Still higher than what we've been through the summer, but doing pretty well. It's, we're keeping a really close eye on it. As you're probably aware, Oregon yesterday was the fifth day or statewide, for cases being above 500 a day. You know, and if you'll recall, you're very worried a week and a half earlier than that when we crossed 400 a day. So, it's pretty concerning. And then watching what's going on statewide or nationwide, Oregon is, just seems to be a little bit in the position that Benton County was during the wildfires. So, awful lot going on all around us and just wondering if and when something might happen here locally. So, still considerable concern about what we may see in the next few days, next week or so as a result of Halloween. And then moving into the holiday season, you know, we have reason to be hopeful because of our ongoing moderate, the low case count here locally, but still quite concerned about that. Locally, our cases overwhelmingly are still occurring in sort of the 18 to 29-year-old age group. About half of our cases are there and then another quarter or so, 30 to 50-year-olds. That's a little bit different than the state where the incidence is a little bit older people. But I think that's to be expected, given that the local demographics and the large number of young adults we've got in the county. Our lap turnaround continues to be really good, well below two days average turnaround. So, we're able to follow up and last week, our team was able to make contact and follow up with 100% of our local cases within 24 hours. So, really strong work there. They are getting some of the new hires trained up, still doing recruiting for a couple of those positions, but everyone's making fast progress in their training. And so, we're putting together a strong team there. The school metrics, you heard last week, were modified by the state. And so, our local school team and the Communicable Ds team are both working with a number of the schools and districts who are analyzing that to see what they will plan to do either the remainder of this term or going into winter term under the new regimen. It's worth noting that although the Benton County metrics allow schools to open K6, schools still, if they have over 10% of either their staff or their student body coming from counties, from other counties, those other counties have to meet the metric as well. And with Lynn County not meeting these new metrics, and the cost of housing and other limitations and just family preferences with students and then cost of housing affecting teacher and staff ability to live in Benton County, there may be some limitations on some of our local schools to be able to open even with Benton County metrics allowing it. So, there's a lot of analysis and individual work to be doing district by district and school by school on that. So, I'll turn it over to Danielle unless people have any questions for me.
I do, Charlie. On the school metrics, what's the timetable on possible, you know, say Benton County met the metrics, what are we looking at for school districts being able to open to K3 or K6 or whatever the, whatever we qualify for?
Yeah, well, the, um, the metrics were live and in force as soon as they were announced by the governor. So, it's really, you know, at any point when a school makes the decision, when they do the analysis, and then when they make the decision, you know, I think that one of the factors that the schools seem to be taking into account, very justifiably so, is not wanting to make an overnight decision that would change families' plans and abilities. And there's transportation to be taken into account. There's a lot of other factors other than just meeting the metric and opening up all your elementary. So, I think the, you know, the information we're getting from schools is they're being very planful and very, you know, working with their teachers, working with their parents, taking all these factors into account before they make a very sudden decision.
Okay. Thank you. And one other comment, and I can't find my notes, but I do remember, I think somebody in your office making a prediction a couple of weeks ago that Oregon had approximately 330 cases per day, and by November 5th, we would be at 500, 550 a day. And whoever said that, I, maybe because it's so close to the election day, I could remember the date, but it was November 5th. And I appreciate that kind of information, kind of roadmap-type information that more than likely, this is where we're headed. And that, I mean, it was a relatively short-term projection, but I guess that's a 50% increase in cases in maybe a little over two weeks. So, whoever that was, tell them they did a good job. That might have been you, I don't know, Charlie.
Well, I'm sorry we were accurate.
Yeah. I think that was part of your, part of the comment also was, here's the prediction, and I hope I'm wrong, but that kind of information really is useful. There's a lot of happy talk going around, and I have some sense we're getting into the, into the winter and it's just tougher to social distance and we're indoors more. And so, it makes sense that the number of cases would go up even if we're doing a pretty good job of behaving ourselves.
Yeah, nationally, there is discussion in my world of national case counts going from 100,000 to 200,000 by January. We dearly hope that that is not true, but the trends are definitely in that direction.
Okay. Thank you. Well, Danielle Brown, why don't you follow up? I think we may have Brian Lee on the, on the phone. I'm not positive. Commissioner, we do. Brian is on now. Okay. Why don't you, Danielle, why don't you finish the Health Department report?
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner. So, the only thing that I can add to Charlie's, that I'll add to Charlie's report was, we are meeting this week about deploying the shower trailer. We've talked about that a couple of times. So, hopefully by Friday, we'll have a strategy for how we're going to deploy, how and where we're going to deploy that through the winter. We also have completed our PPE ordering, and those shipments are starting to come in and will be stored in the county storage where we have all of the other PPE storage in place. So, that should give us enough PPE. Hopefully, you know, if cases don't triple, double, or quadruple, we will get through the week, through the, through the winter. The other thing we're working a lot on right now are the placement options for people experiencing homelessness and how we're going to support that population through the winter with the decreased capacity at the medical weather shelter. So, we're continuing to have meetings and conversations about how and what we're going to do to help support that population through the cold winter months.
Okay. Any questions for Danielle? Hearing none, we'll circle back to Brian Lee.
Yes, morning, everyone. So, EOC-wise, obviously, we're not fully activated. We are on standby for any possible law enforcement things, but other than that, we are really focusing on finalizing all that donation stuff. It's pretty much all settled. There's just a few little odds and ends we're tying up and closing that whole process down. And then, other than that, we're sort of just getting back to quote-unquote business as usual and still available for the Department Operations Center as needed. And that's all I had to report.
Thanks. Any questions for Brian? All right.
I just wanted to have one comment for the entire team. I think they're doing human's work and thank you all.
Okay. Well said. Next up, Lilia Neville.
Morning, Commissioners. Happy Election Day. I have a few quick updates for you this morning. So, this morning begins our first day of scale-down check operation. So, we are starting our redo staffing. As it's just day two of our redo staffing, things are going well. We are going to be pulling our October metrics sooner rather than later so we can make any last-minute adjustments to our November strategy if we need to in terms of the scale-down of deliverables. Thus far, in terms of engagement with our digital deliverables, it seems like the adjustment is going well, but will melt more by the end of the week. I think that's all I have for you this morning.
All right. Thanks, Lilia. Okay. Kate Porsha, do you have a economic report for us?
Yes, just very briefly, two updates for you this morning, Commissioners. One, I wanted to make you aware, Business Oregon had some PPE available for small businesses. So, Heather on our team is working to coordinate that. It's kind of a mixture of some face masks, some hand sanitizer, some gloves, different types of items. We said yes, please, to anything and everything we can get. So, Heather will coordinate that. We will also coordinate with our friends in the DOC through, and Public Health. We'll probably store them at the same location, but then our office will completely handle the distribution, so our Public Health friends won't have to worry about that. Also, we are just in the last few days of working to distribute the last of the Business Oregon money. This is around three money that has the constraint with the subtraction formula. At this point, really, we're finding folks, really, it's really folks who didn't receive any PPP or idle or very, very little. They just have to receive so little because anything they receive gets subtracted from the Business Oregon money. But my team is making phone calls. We're pushing this out through our different social media channels and trying to see who we can find to take advantage of these funds. Lastly, I know you guys are going to be discussing the CARE Act money later this morning. Unfortunately, I'm not able to stay on because I have a meeting with the directors, but I'll maybe circle back. I don't know. Joe, maybe you can tell me who, who to circle back with to find out how, how the conversation went and if there's anything else you need from our team on that.
Kate, please circle back with Mary Ottley.
Okay. I'll do it. And that's it for me this morning. Thank you all.
All right. Thanks, Kate. I don't see any questions. I would point out that this is the first Tuesday, and we will meet with the EOC/DOC folks on the first. And third Tuesdays, we've changed from our weekly schedule that we've had for a number of months to twice a month. And so, this is the first Tuesday, and we will see you again in two weeks. So, appreciate your efforts. Next up, 4.2. I think we're in pretty good shape, but discuss covered and secured loads for the landfill. Daniel Reddick is, and Greg Varette, I see Daniel. So, if you're ready, take it away.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. We discussed the covered and secured loads initiative back in August, and we just wanted to provide an update. We got your feedback on the type of rate structure that we could potentially use to enact the uncovered loads fee that is allowed in Chapter 23. So, we worked with Republic Services, and they put together a plan to have a $10 difference between the rates, two separate rates of covered loads or covered and secured loads versus uncovered and unsecured loads. And that would be going into effect on January 1st, 2021. And I know Julie Jackson is with us today as well, just in case she wants to provide any other updates.
Morning, Julie.
Good morning. Hi, yeah. I don't really have any answers except to say that we continue to talk to people who think this is a good idea. And there is some signage that will be probably in the next three weeks, we'll have signage up at the landfill, certainly by the end of the month. So, for the whole month of December, people will see signs that encourage them to cover and secure their loads and remind them that there'll be a higher fee if they don't. So, we want to really give people a lot of options. And we're training the Scale House folks to take a pretty gentle approach to it right off the bat. They don't want to be the police. They want to just help people understand what they need to do. So, I think it's going to be a great program. We're excited to get it started.
Zan?
Julie, has there, as a result of the shift in the way that small loads were treated last year with that kind of rate charged regardless of tonnage for those small loads, are you still getting pushback from people that are bringing in small loads?
No. That really was a very topic about this time of year last year. I remember it well. And we have heard very little about it since then. So, I think that part's okay. The great thing about this fee is that no one has to pay it.
Yeah.
They will have the opportunity. I think, you know, they'll try very hard to, especially kind of the regular customers, they'll try very hard to give them a kind of a warning, hey, next time you come in, you need to have this covered and secured, or we'll have to charge you. So, there's going to be a lot of education going on. We don't think, we don't think it's going to be a huge source of revenue, but we also think it's an opportunity to put a little more money into cleaning the roads. So, I think that program comes full circle.
Okay, thank you. I look forward to hearing how it rolls out.
Yeah.
And to follow up on the education piece, Tino and Julie put together a really great video that...
Daniel is equally responsible for this video, so let's give him credit.
Oh, thank you. We put together a really great video that educates the public on what best practices for covering and securing small loads would be. So, hopefully that helps us distribute it, as well as we're planning on updating our website. And I believe Republic is planning on updating their website as well with more information on how the public can properly cover and secure their load.
And if I could give you just a one-minute update on what's happening with wildfires in regards to Coffin View? We are, we have, I visited our website. If you go to the Coffin View website, coffinviewlandfill.com, you'll see there's a wildfire disposal page there. We have a lot of information from FEMA and from the counties. So, we're trying to help people understand what has to be done before any of that waste can come to Coffin View. It has to be profiled, has to be tested for asbestos. If the, if it's from a wildfire, it does not have to be tested for some of the metals. The EQ has waived that particular testing, but there is quite a bit that's going on that needs to be done, and we're trying to update people on that website as well. So, you might take a look at it and see what's on there and if you have suggestions for us, we'd be happy to hear that, too.
Julie, have you also, is all of that wildfire debris coming in through individuals bringing in loads, or are you, as a hauler, also bringing in loads of debris from some of those fire-affected areas?
So, we don't haul in any locations that really have any significant amount of fire debris, but we are seeing material coming from North Lincoln Sanitary at the coast, and we are starting to see a little bit coming from the canyon. So, this first wave of material coming in is the material that is, are the people who decided to clean up themselves. They're not waiting for FEMA. So, these are the people who are calling Pacific Sanitation and North Lincoln Sanitary and the different haulers in their area and getting the box and getting it hauled. We think there'll be a larger second wave that we don't anticipate for maybe another 30 days to begin, and that is when FEMA steps in and starts doing the cleanup site-by-site. And then, they, we don't know yet, I have a meeting right after this to talk about that, but we don't know yet if they've hired a third-party vendor, if they'll be looking for local vendors to haul. We just don't know, but we think that's the real big effort. And until that starts to happen, we won't really know what the process looks like. If you go onto Coffin View, we've added a second scale, temporary scale, and Scale House so that we can keep those wildfire loads coming in without disrupting traffic at the regular business area of the landfill.
Thank you. That's great to hear that you have a second scale to take that overload.
Yeah.
And back to the covered load question, I think, hopefully, you're emphasizing just that that's part of being a good neighbor. You're going from your place to the landfill, and there's lots of homes in between. And I trust you'll have good cooperation on this effort.
I think one of our signs actually says something about being a good neighbor, you know, in Benton County. So, yeah, we agree 100% with that.
Okay.
And in addition to the good neighbor aspect, we also focus some of the messaging on litter, but also on road, road safety, which, which is a big component.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, it'll go smoothly, and I appreciated your comment about this isn't really a revenue measure, it's an environmental effort. And so, I anticipate it'll go smoothly, but we're looking forward to...
It's due to time.
Looking forward to hearing how, how it goes. So, if there's nothing else on that topic, we'll go to 4.3, discuss supplemental budget. And Jen is all ready to go.
I am here. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, so, financial services is again coming to the Commissioners with a very large supplemental budget package. There are currently 10 funds within the budget document that need to have some amendments made, and we are going to go through them right now. And if you have any questions, please jump in, let me know. The first thing would be that the general fund, there is a net appropriation increase Within the general fund, the general government operations will be increasing $3,329,036. The primary source of funding for this would be CARES Act funds. As everyone knows, we've been receiving a lot of CARES money from reimbursements. Therefore, we are asking to increase appropriations in our non-departmental program to offset the unanticipated costs from the COVID pandemic. And then, the Elections Department received a grant that would allow them to purchase an automated signature verification system. Also, within the general fund government operations, there are a couple of small decreases in appropriations for assessment and financial services. This would be from the result of discussions we had earlier in the pandemic about ways that we could reduce expenditures due to revenue uncertainty in this biennium. Then, we move on to the public safety program in the general fund. There is a decrease in appropriations of $488,676. Part of that, this one is a little funny, there are some increases in appropriations, but the decrease that we are requesting actually makes the net change a decrease. So, there is new funding for the Emergency Management Division, and the funding does come from the Department of Justice, the Criminal Justice Commission, and Oregon Health Authority. That is what would allow them to purchase the Mass Care Sheltering Trailer and then decontamination unit and supplies. Also, within this program, we are decreasing appropriations for the 911 service agreement that is no longer needed due to the... due to the creation of the 911 service district. The health program is requesting an increase in appropriations of $684,687. And then the funding sources for that would be COVID funds and OHA grants and some transfer revenue. The increase in appropriations would be for 2.2 FTE community health workers, for limited-duration emergency hire contact tracers, materials, travel, and testing costs for these new workers. We would also ask to reclassify 0.3 FTE from law enforcement to emergency preparedness. And then there is also an increase in contract services to keep the fund balanced. And that is a result of an action in Fund 118 that we will be discussing shortly. And then transfers to other funds would be a decrease in appropriations of $34,024. That would be the result of proposed cost savings due to revenue uncertainty for COVID. And that is the 10% reduction in transfers to the intragovernmental services fund that the law enforcement division agreed to contribute to cost savings. And then lastly, in the general fund, excuse me, we are requesting an increase to contingency of $824,686. The source of this increased contingency would be the result of the reduced transfers and the reduction of the expenditures for the 911 agreement. And then the balance then is just an increase in appropriations as a result of all the cost savings to keep the general fund in balance. Are there any questions on the general fund?
Huh?
Everybody good? I'll just keep on trucking.
Sounds good.
Okay. The local option levy fund is actually a net appropriation increase of $0. We are just reclassifying appropriation authority. So within that, the public safety program would decrease $169,828. Again, that is the portion of the 911 service agreement that is housed in the local option levy fund. And then to keep the fund a balance, we would increase the transfers to the other fund by that same $169,828. And the reason for doing that is we don't hold a contingency in the local option levy fund. So we just want to be able to offset that cost. Any questions on the local option levy fund? That one was pretty simple. Still good? Still good? Okay. The Oregon Health Plan Fund, which is Fund 18 I had mentioned earlier, there is a net appropriation increase of $0. Again, that is solely a reclassification of appropriation authority. This fund is really no longer needed, so we are moving some of the expenditures around so that we can prep to close the fund. So in health program operations, we are decreasing the appropriation authority by $45,000. And this is just to move that to the transfer to other funds so that we are able to transfer that to the general fund. In transfers to other funds, we are increasing appropriations, $145,000. Again, we're just looking to increase the appropriation transfer to get ready to close out the fund. And then we will be eliminating the contingency and also moving that $100,000 to the transfer to other funds to move that out to the general fund as well. Any questions on that one?
No, but I can see a trend here that overall the finance, financial services is looking to streamline our budgets and get rid of some of the funds that are just small and not necessarily helpful anymore in terms of tracking and managing our funds.
I would agree with that. And Mary is nodding, so.
Excellent.
That is good. Okay, so then the management service fund, there is a requested net appropriation increase of $275,000. Within that, there is an increase to the general government operations of $390,800. And the source of those funds would be transferred over from the employee benefit trust fund. And the reason we are coming for this appropriation increase is there were higher-than-anticipated insurance costs and some unanticipated costs for risk management. And then we would also be decreasing the contingency, the $115,800 that is in there. And then those funds would be offset, would be offsetting unanticipated costs for the CFO search and for the financial services restructure. Any questions on that? Zan?
Yes, I have a question about the insurance costs. Is that the unemployment insurance that's higher than usual this year? Or is that due to higher-than-anticipated insurance costs in our base health insurance coverage?
Actually, it's our liability of property coverage.
Okay. And that's just gone up for everyone, correct?
It has. And then last year, we also spent probably $100,000 for security upgrades on all the facilities. And that was, within that cost in or two, some of the transfers to pay for the moonlighting and the other, the cameras and stuff that were put on the facilities last year.
And that falls into the risk management and unanticipated costs?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
That's enough.
Okay, then we move on to the employee benefit trust fund. Again, this one is actually a net appropriation increase of $0. We're just reclassifying the appropriation authority. General government operations would decrease $100,000. And that would be to create a transfer account line to move the funds to management services fund, as we mentioned above. Then we do have transfers to other funds with an increase, $275,000. And we are, excuse me, creating the transfer account line to, I feel like I'm repeating myself all the time, to move funds to management services fund for the unanticipated appropriations provided in the fund detail above that we had discussed. And then we are decreasing contingency, $175,000, to move the funds out of contingency to offset the remaining costs in the fund detail provided above. So that was more just cleanup of moving funds to management services funds to offset all of those costs. Any questions?
No.
Keep going.
Okay. Keep going. Intragovernmental Services Fund, we are requesting an actual net appropriation decrease of $43,204. That decrease would be in public safety program operations. And that would be the 10% reduction in materials and services and capital outlay that was the result of that discussion with departments on cost savings due to future revenue uncertainty for COVID. And then the law enforcement agreed to reduce their transfer from the general fund and local options fund by 10%. So we are just asking for a reduction in that fund. Any questions?
No.
Nope.
Okay, enterprise operations fund, another fund that has actually a net appropriation decrease of zero, but we are reclassifying appropriation authority. Natural Areas and Parks is requesting an increase to capital outlay in the amount of $90,000. And that was due to, they are having an unanticipated issue with the well at Salmonberry, which Lori assures me you all know about. And this is an opportune time then for them to also upgrade the Adair restrooms to meet ADA standards. So they are requesting to then decrease their contingency accounts by $90,000 to offset those expenditures. Okay. The Benton Health Center Fund is requesting a net appropriation increase of $515,453. All of that would be in health program operations. And the funding source for these expenditures would be HERSA and HHS COVID funds and grants, and then also a FCC telehealth grant. And so within that, the appropriations are increased for 15 vital monitoring stations, PAPR kits, a total of eight, dental upgrades, agricultural worker testing, including equipment, materials, supplies, and a limited-duration navigator, three vaccine refrigerators, four outdoor canopies, patient remote monitoring devices and technology, and then other miscellaneous materials and supplies to support COVID response. Any questions on that one?
Nope.
More COVID money. The East Wind Health Center Fund is asking for an appropriation increase of $90,854. From that, it is also sourced by various HERSA and HHS COVID funds and grants. They are asking also to increase appropriations for vital monitoring stations, expand their dental services, two vaccine refrigerators, and then other materials and supplies that support COVID response. I'm assuming there are no questions on that one either?
Nope.
Okay. The final fund-
Jen?
Would be, yes, yes, Commissioner.
Before we get too far past it, on the, where did I, on the parks, lost track of it. Might have been last week, a car ran, went on a wild ride and ran into the restrooms at the North Albany Park. Is this too recent an event to get in here? Okay. That's all. Thanks.
Yeah, okay. It is, it is another event to be included here.
Thanks.
Then the final fund would be the trust fund. It is again a net appropriation change of zero, but a reclassification of appropriation authority. The Natural Areas and Parks, again, is requesting an increase of $20,100 to come out of their contingency. And that is to finish some improvements and restorations at Fort Hoskins. They intend, Natural Areas and Parks, or whatever the new name might be, intend to cload out this trust going forward and to pay that out of park maintenance and eliminate another fund. Overall, we are coming to you within the 10 funds to ask for a net appropriation increase of $5,153,812. Of that, $4,274,222 belongs in operations, $555,804 belongs in transfers, and $323,786 is classified as contingency. And that is the end.
Okay, that is a lot of transfers and changes, but not surprising given all of the additional COVID money that has come in and the general cleanup that you all are doing in the structure of our financial system. So, thank you.
You are welcome. I'm hoping that maybe next biennium, we can get back to a, some sort of normal, smaller supplemental budget package.
Yeah.
What is normal?
Yeah. It's challenging. Are we ready for a motion on this topic?
I think so.
I moved forward this item to the November 24, 2020 board meeting as an agenda item. And at that time, we have a hearing, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Second. All in favor of Zan's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we will finish this up at our November 24 board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I do appreciate the cleanup. It's always easy to add funds for a specific project. And then 10 or 15 years later, it's still there. And so some spring cleaning came early this year. So, thank you.
Yes, Chair. You're welcome.
Chair Malone, could I ask for a very brief break?
Certainly.
Since we are ahead of schedule?
We are ahead of schedule.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
We'll take a five-minute break here and get back at 9:52 is the goal. And next up is update on the CARES- All right, so, welcome back. And next up is Mary Ottley talking about giving us an update on the CARES Act funding. And take it away, Mary.
Good morning, Commissioners. I don't know if you all have paper copies? Would you like to have any projected ones as well?
I think the paper copy is fine.
I agree.
Okay. So we're here to talk about the CARES funding and where we stand right now and what we possibly might do with the funding. The top part of the sheet shows where we are after our last drawdown request. So we still have $1.3 million that we're eligible to request. That is a fund still sitting with, in the state's hands right now. And of that $1.3 million, you can see the list of known costs. We know we're going to incur these costs between now and December 30th. That we have personnel costs, and we're also repaying the funds, the personnel costs that we asked for on those employees that are grant-funded already. So we are paying those back right now. So we still have $124,000 yet to return to the state. The camp house program is the housing for quarantining and vulnerable populations. We've increased that for the next couple of months. And so that's what the $150. Non-congregate housing is, we're reaching out to one or two additional hotels to possibly, between now and December, house more individuals or families. Fairgrounds camping, that's an ongoing, we're paying $7,000 a month for the motorhomes and tents that are out at the camp, out at the fairgrounds for the COVID-related individuals. IT upgrades, they're still working. I haven't seen the last bill on the network upgrades that were done on each of the buildings to boost our capacity. Portable shower, this is actually on-site. The bill hadn't been paid in the dollars. So we purchased a portable shower unit. If you want to see it, it's out, it probably works right now. This is, it showers in restrooms. It's a very, very nice-looking piece of equipment. We paid $75,000 and then an additional $5,000 for the setup and electrical hooks, or whatever we need to do to make it operational. Danielle's coming up with a plan on where it's going to be deployed and who's going to be responsible for the making of this going forward. We have porta-potties we're responsible for. We place throughout, in some of the camping areas. And so as long as those camping areas are still viable, we'll have porta-potties in those locations. We just placed a very- We just placed a very large order for PPE, for masks and gowns and gloves, and so that's what the $100,000 that has to supply us, we hope, for the future. So, we'll have them on hand. Facilities, this is an ongoing cost of all the cleaning supplies and other things to make our facility safe. We purchased, I want to say, three large tents and heaters, space heaters for inside those tents, warming shelters. I'm not sure where they're all going to be placed. I know one of them's going through the HSB to be placed outside, I think the back door, for meeting clients outside, for those that don't want to come in, or whatever reason. So, they'll put some tables, picnic tables, and heaters out there for contact that way for clients. Just other costs, facial scanners. We purchased four kiosk-type scanners that you can walk in and it'll take your temperature as you walk up to it. So, it's just another reminder to pay attention to your temperature when you walk into a building. And then the ongoing video services that is being provided for your meetings and the other needs that we're streaming. So, those are the known costs that we should spend down out of that $1.3 million. And now we get to the decision point, point that Joe and I have spent a lot of time talking to all kinds of people, the city of Carvalis and nonprofits. And so, these are suggestions. These are funds that, you know, we're making these suggestions, and they're up for discussion right now. Another $100,000 to go to the Benton Community Foundation to be dispersed in nonprofits, very similar to what we did in May. Childcare, we would send these funds probably to United Way to be dispersed, I would assume that Boys and Girls Club, and there's a couple other rural childcare that would receive most of these funds. I don't know if you've seen the recommendation from the Economic Development Kate Porches Group, and they're asking the county to participate in their, to the tune of $30,000. Some of this is the mailing, shop local Carvalis vouchers, and I can't remember what the other programs were. But the city's portion of this program is probably $200,000 and $700,000, and they want $30,000 from the county for that program. Another $100,000 to go out to small businesses and grants, again through North West. And non-congregate housing, that's again more housing. Broadband spending, we didn't really know exactly what to put in, so we put $50,000 for the broadband spending, with the understanding that it would be spent by December 30th. We are going to reimburse facilities for the cost of the use of the new building, the Pfizer Building. That's the least cost for the period of time that we have the EOC in there. And then, just recently, the fleet staff purchased new iPads with the hard covers, much like what the deputies have in their cars. Right now, all fleet staffs use one iPad in the shops. This would give them all their own individual iPads. And that's the, Joe and I proposed list. We also looked at buying a food truck. So, that's what's in the second column over there, is the food truck, which has cost The environmental health advisory, or the rest, I don't really know what they're called, but anyway, Bill Emmerger's group asked for $150,000 for rebates, because they, all the restaurants and swimming pool operators paid for a year's worth of inspections in January of last year, and they may have received half of what they paid for. And so, this was a request to either rebate or give them credit on the 2021 billing. And then one of the other items we looked at was the cost of the fiber extension from Sunset to the 4500 Building. And this would be a stretch for the CARES funds. If we could have proceeded with a project from the fiber extension from the 4500 Building to the fairgrounds, that would very much be a CARES Act, because that would be to be able to stand up the EOC at the fairgrounds, and that's one of the future costs. But that, we can't get done by December 30th. So, those are, so if we do all that, there's still $500,000 that we haven't found?
No.
Actually...
I guess?
Mary, correct that. It's not 500,000 that's left available, it's 137,000 that's left available?
Oh, you said 137,000, right. Wrong line. 500,000 is the total of proposals that Joe and I are bringing forward. Thank you for correcting me. And also, I've also put in what the monthly cost that we expect to incur after December 30th. So, we're looking at $52,000 a month, which is $600,000 a year. And then we also have some actual one-time or ongoing costs, the unity shelters, we agreed to pay them, $148,000 to manage the shelters that the city of Carvalis is having built and placed on church properties and other properties. And then there's the ongoing cost of contact tracing, and that could be $750,000 to $1,500,000 annually. We don't have those numbers. Suzanne and they're all working, they're having a meeting on Friday to talk about what additional residual cost of contact tracing is going to be after December 30th.
Okay.
Now, do you have any comments, thoughts, where we should do with the extra $100,000?
I have a question before we go there.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions as well.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
My question is, in terms of some of the nonprofits that we support, is there a mechanism to see how, what their broad outreach is to the community? I want to make sure that really needy people get help, and I'm especially looking at diverse populations.
And when we, in May, when we dispersed it, I think more than half of the funding went to rural communities and diverse nonprofits. And I have that information, if you'd like to know where the funds went, Ben.
We can direct.
We can give, we can't name it an organization, but we can certainly direct where the funds, types of organizations we'd like to know.
Right, right.
Our stipulation before was that at least 30% of those funds needed to go to rural populations and communities of color.
I remember that, yeah.
Culturally appropriate organizations. So, I think we'd probably want to do the same thing again.
I would think so, yes.
And I know that we, that made a big difference. So, I have a couple of questions about, well, the broadband study. I know that that $50,000 price that we were quoted is what we were looking at with respect to the Economic Development Administration proposal. However, if we were to do it ourselves, we'd probably have to put out an RFP for that, and it would be a competitive bid, and it's unlikely that we would actually have that contract signed, let alone the services completed by December 30th.
Actually, I think that this particular project is probably a non-starter to accomplish before the end of the year. Rachel Maddox Hughes and I have been playing phone tag, trying to connect on this particular topic. But my initial assessment is I don't think it's practical to expect that it would be completed before the end of the year. Mary and I have talked about the potential of using some other funds for that, and we can talk about that here in just a moment. So, I think that one is a question mark. Also, another question mark is the RV dump site near the Men's Cold Weather Shelter. We're currently working with the city on this to identify what this would look like and how much it would cost. There's emails going around as recent as yesterday, so we haven't really pinned this one down. I would say that I don't hold out a lot of hope from a timing perspective for this one, but we'll see. And plus, we're also still trying to identify what the funding, what funding would be required to make that happen. So, I think that one's a question mark. And then also, the OSU trace program is a question mark. We'd like to talk to the board a little bit more in detail about that today, so you're aware of that particular request. And then also, as Mary talked about, the tailing expenses. You're going to see those large numbers in your upper right-hand corner of your screen, the $750,000 to $1.5 million. Mary and I participated in a meeting with health department staff that was conducted last Friday, and they put several proposals in front of us as it relates to solidifying our contact tracing program. And there are proposed substantially increased costs over and above what we're currently experiencing. Suzanne Hoffman is working with her team, as Mary mentioned, later this week to really sift through these proposals in more detail, and then to come back to Mary and I with a preferred alternative, if you will, and then we'll take a look at it. The amount of dollars that were being shared last Friday were significant.
Yes.
And I don't want the board to be surprised, because to continue contact tracing at the level, at least at the level where we're at, and likely a higher level, is going to be extremely expensive, especially in light of the fact that there are no funds after December 30th. And also, as I understand it, according to Charlie, and I don't know if Charlie is on the line here or not, but we were being paid a flat amount from the state for each contact tracing effort that we undertook, and those funds have now ran out, and the state is still encouraging us to bill them. However, there's no commitment to make good on that at this point, because the state is trying to identify alternative funds for that. So, if anything on this sheet that should bring up a concern, it is really the additional contact tracing. And stay tuned, there'll be more to come over the next couple of weeks as we work with the health department. And then, once we feel like we're all on the same page, we'll come before the board and let you know where we're at and what we think and what the next step should be.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, OHA has run out of funds to reimburse on that per case, $11,000 per case basis, or whatever it was. So, with the legislature meeting in emergency session, most likely at the end of November, there's potential for them to increase appropriations for at least that piece, but only through December 30th, because it's all CARES Act funds, unless they dip into general funds.
That's correct.
So, I think that there's just, there's a lot of uncertainty. And then the other piece of uncertainty is whether or not Congress will decide to shift that December 30th deadline and provide a little bit more grace to spend out these funds. But it's another unknown. So, I think that we need to go ahead and do what we know needs doing now and not wait for those other things to come clear.
Yeah, we're not counting on those funds, and you know, when you look at what will happen after December 30th of this year, a significant burden is being placed on local government to fund the contact tracing. And I think contact tracing is really one of those hidden costs, and you know, it's not even a topic that we really discuss much with our other local jurisdictions, because everybody knows we're just taking care of it. But I can tell you that come January of next year, it's going to be a very expensive proposition for Benton County, especially based on some of the proposals I saw on Friday, potentially beefing up the staffing by another six or seven contact tracers, and then looking at more long-term duration for 18 to 24 months for contact tracing. So, Commissioners, if you can lobby your legislators to try and see if there can be additional help from the feds or the state, I think this is a critical piece that we need some help on, because this is significant.
And as soon as we have numbers, that will help immensely to be able to make that case.
Understood.
What do you mean, have numbers?
Well, right now, the health department is working on estimates of what the full costs are going to be for that contact tracing and investigation on kind of a monthly net moving forward without assistance.
We can tell you right now, on an annualized basis, if we were to keep the status quo with the 13 staff members that we have dedicated to contact tracing, that's about $700,000 a year. And the $1.5 million that Mary shows there, if we went to the preferred alternative that we saw last Friday, our costs would really rise from about $700,000 a year to about $1.5 million a year. So, about an additional $850,000 over and above what we've already committed at this point. So, I don't think we'll end up there. I think that there are some things that Suzanne is looking at in addition to her staff to refine the proposal, based on looking at our processes, based on looking at our staffing model, based on looking at span of control and role clarity. So, I do think we're going to end up in a better place a couple of weeks from now versus what I'm telling you today, but I can't guarantee that, but I believe that to be the case.
And Joe, and Mary, what's the goal of today's discussion?
One is to get some direction, to see if you're in agreement with our proposals, and then if you have any additional thoughts on where to spend some of these funds that we can help.
I certainly would support having an RV dump site near the Men's Cold Weather Shelter if we can, as long as, you know, if, but this is a contingent decision upon what the city decides about how we are going to allow or not allow RVs to camp near the Men's Cold Weather Shelter for the season. But the only dump site right now in town is at the fairgrounds, so it's kind of awkward for folks. The, and it might have some benefits long-term for other community members in terms of access to a dump site, other than at the fairgrounds. I also, I'm interested in the environmental health rebates and credits. I think that it would be a really, it would be another way, alternative to a grant to support all of those restaurants and pools and spas in this time. But I have to say that in terms of my own personal criteria for some of these decisions, part of what I've also been thinking about is things that provide some infrastructure or capacity for the long-term and not just immediate reaction and response. So, I'm trying to balance out, I'm struggling with that.
Commissioner, let me address the rebates or credits that you were just touching on for folks within customers of our environmental health department. The Bill Emmerger is on the line. Mary and I did meet with Bill. The actual request was about twice this amount. I think the actual preferred alternative was a $300,000 credit. As Mary and I looked at the budget, we think that is a high hurdle to overcome, and I think both Mary and I were certainly more comfortable at the $150,000 level. Mary, I thought we had talked about potentially these funds coming out of a different bucket. Can you elaborate on that real quick?
Yeah, the CARES funds, we can't supplant revenue, so we have to be very careful of how we describe this. Those, the funds, possibly we can use the funds that we received for our drawdown that was used for reimbursements for personnel costs. So, we do have funds in that cost center if we want to do that. I just, when we start playing with revenues, or it looks like we're replacing revenues, I don't want to have anyone, any auditor come and say, hey, that's not allowed. There's not very many things that aren't allowed, but revenue reimbursement is one of the things that's not allowed.
Yeah, I did read, sorry, I did read that state audit, and yeah, I saw that message loud and clear.
Well, Mary, I guess if there's a way of doing that, I'm in favor of some kind of adjustment. of adjustment, especially in light of that some of these folks paid for services that they did not receive. And if we can find a way of doing that, I support this line item.
I would like to state that in terms of some of the other items that don't have numbers next to them, one of the others that I strongly support is the potential acquisition of a hotel or motel to serve as non-congregate housing in the near term and as permanent supportive housing in the long term. Again, I'm not at all certain that that is the kind of opportunity that will become, that will manifest itself before December 30th. But I wouldn't mind having some money in the kitty for flexibility so that we can help with that. I think that there are many other potential funding sources. And so at most, the county would be a leverage point, or perhaps an earnest money source. But I think that, I want to be ready to participate if need be, to make something happen.
Commissioners, when we initially started looking at our available funding, we were also hoping that the state E-Board was going to come through with monies for counties such as ours that could be used in the way Commissioner Ogierow was mentioning. Unfortunately, that did not come to pass. But up until then, we were trying to reserve some dollars to apply to a particular acquisition. But with that funding not coming through and looking at the clock ticking, I still don't think it is very likely that we can make something happen. And I would, my cautionary note would be, Commissioner, if you wish to set aside some money for that, we can certainly do that. But we need to have a date by which we agree that if it is not, something doesn't come to fruition, that we can then apply this money somewhere else. Because otherwise, this money will just be lost by December 30th.
Understood. And I, as I understand it, there's a significant momentum to stand up that turnkey funding opportunity for counties that are not fire-affected for the rest of the state through the special session of the legislature, the 26th and 27th of this month. So I think that we have that opportunity to look at that date certain. The other component there is that the, it's the Oregon Community Foundation that will be accepting those proposals. And they will have all the mechanisms and processes in place, because they're setting it up for the fire-affected counties now. So it could be that there might be some rapid turnaround potential. But yeah, so I'm comfortable with setting a date on that and the kind of expiration for those reserved funds.
Mary, have you been following this discussion about a kind of a drop dead date, whether in particular this, this line item, or maybe there's others in here? How, what kind of date would you be comfortable with saying, we're going to give up on this particular project, this line item, and put the money back in the?
The emergency session, Commissioner, did you say that was in November?
Yes.
Or the?
November. What I, the dates that I had heard were the 26th and 27th of November.
Okay, so after Thanksgiving.
Correct.
So if we knew the first week of December, because we need to have, whatever we do with these funds needs to be, if it's a thing we're buying, we have to have it in our hands on December 30th. And, and we can't prepay for any services, so it has to be a tangible item in order to qualify for reimbursement.
So I think-
We can have contingency plans of if it doesn't happen, that we can't use it to leverage housing, then we need to have, if not, then we're going to do this fairly quickly with it.
Well-
So that we get reimbursed for something else.
One of those things could be the additional, could be additional funds through the Benton Community Foundation, or additional funds for community childcare, those kinds of things, or even additional funds for the OSU Trace Program. Those would all be easy to execute in that kind of a timeframe.
Yes. And Commissioners, I changed, I pulled the 70, there, the broadband study, the 50,000 out, and then right above that was non-congregate housing. I had moved that up to the known cost. So now the balance is $222, $222,311 is the bottom line, if you take those two numbers out of it.
So Mary, which numbers again?
The 50K and the one above it, the 35,000.
Yeah, 34 and 35. I've removed those numbers, because the 35, the, I'm not correct, for non-congregate housing is actually up above in the ongoing costs.
Right. It's in two places. Got it. So that's a drop, and then the 50,000. And for the broadband, I firmly believe that this is some, an investment the county should make. I don't think it's possible with these funds. But, so I just wanted to reiterate my firm interest.
I did pursue the conversation with the City of Corvallis to see if they were interested, because the actual study itself to include the City of Corvallis is more like 75,000, somewhere in there. And the city declined to participate, indicating that they were not interested at this point in time. Also, as it relates to the OSU Trace Program, I know there's been a lot of discussions going on here, but just to make sure all of the customer, or commissioners are on the same page, OSU did approach the City of Corvallis and was requesting between 120 and 140,000 to complete a sixth week of testing for, that they, they have already done five weeks, or five weekends of testing. They'd like to do a sixth weekend at some point, potentially in January, is the last email I saw. So the, the city, I don't believe that they're planning on honoring this request from OSU. Part of their thought process is, we did check in with our public health folks within Benton County, and I would say, just to summarize it, and if Charlie's on the line, he can go in more detail, but there, our public health staff didn't think that there was significant benefit to funding a sixth weekend for 120 to 140,000. And that they thought that money could be better spent in some of these other categories.
I would agree.
So that's what it boiled down to there. And Mark Shepard and I, I told him that Mary and I were not recommending that the county fund that. And he indicated that he was recommending that the city not fund that either. But the board does have the opportunity, if you wish, to dedicate funding there. We're just not recommending it.
I have a question about the community childcare line item and the potential uses. In terms of your investigations there, are you thinking that that money would also go through the Benton Community Foundation, or direct, or would it go directly to childcare providers that are, that need subsidy in order to be able to operate?
Mary has talked to both Benton Community Foundation and United Way, and I think we settled on utilizing United Way to get that money out. Mary, would you like to elaborate, since you don't have a mask on? And I, hard for me to talk and breathe.
Our intention was to use United Way for the childcare and designate those funds for childcare. One of the conversations I want to have was like, is there's any way to designate some of this to be for tutoring? If there's any way we can get funds set aside to, because I think that's one of the challenges. Joe and I, and Tracy, and Paul, is a good group of folks looking at our childcare situation here in the county. And we, which is, you're seeing some of the plots we had, but we couldn't figure a way to be equitable and not untaxable to our employees to get these funds out.
Yeah.
Particularly to permanent employees with childcare. So short of that, we're going out to the community with our childcare dollars.
I think that that makes the most sense. And there are a handful of providers, and none of them are quite recouping their expenses, because they can't handle as many kids. And it's, it's very challenging. I've also heard from Helen Higgins about how, how difficult it is to have kids there all day, and watching them do their schoolwork, and watching some of the elementary school kids that can't read yet, and giving up in frustration as they sit in front of their tablets. And so there's a definite need for tutoring and for that kind of a capacity, so that kids don't fall behind.
And I'd like to credit our childcare team of Benton County employees that we put together about six or eight weeks ago. That particular idea came through that childcare group, and so we think it's a very good idea. We actually had a lot of other creative ideas, as Mary mentioned, many of them hard to implement from an equity perspective, as well as-
Yeah.
Some of them hard to implement and have the money spent prior to the end of the year. I've had several conversations with Helen Higgins on this topic, and she had provided us with some financial information from the Boys and Girls Club. And it's really shocking the amount of money that goes into daycare or childcare in this community. And just, you know, what she had reflected for the program that they're offering right now, September through December, it's half a million dollars in cost to support that program.
Yep. So one of the other line items that I see that could be deployed quickly, if we have a drop dead date for some of the other, is the, that IT assets to support remote work. We could probably acquire additional devices if we needed to, in order to use some of those funds to, in order to support continuing remote work.
Mary, do you want to report on your dialogue with Adam Lordz? That's kind of where we left things. We were going to do, have some more dialogue with our IT director on this topic.
Yeah, right now, the demand is, has been met. The backlog is in their ability to deploy them. We have the assets, we just don't have the staff to deploy. They're almost caught up, and they're, you know, and so they're, I, I think, once a week, I send them an email saying, Adam, are you sure there's nothing we can purchase that will help us? And, and he, he says the demand for the machines has been met, it's just that they can't get them deployed.
Got it.
So I think we're good. And then we, they did, like I said, to boost the Wi-Fi capacity in a building. So that should be good. I don't know, Captain Devaney, do you have any thoughts? I've reached out to the law enforcement a couple times, but I don't know how the jail's doing, if you need anything there.
No, we've, the computer, we, we only have one person that can really work remotely. So we've been able to, Amelia is the only one that gets to really work from home. So she does have laptops, she works Zoom from home as often as she can for the rest of it. I know, you know, there's, there's other projects we have going on, but nothing that falls under those types of things. Or it's going to be more for CIP projects in the future.
Okay.
Well, I think this looks like a really solid list. It does cover all of the items that we have talked about off and on over time. And I think we have a considerable amount of uncertainty. So I don't think I can think of anything else that I would add at this moment.
Mary, I have a question on the fiber extension sunset to 4500. Is that practical to, and listed at $70,000, is that feasible to get done by the end of the year?
It is feasible to get done by the end of the year. We would have to state our cases to how that is COVID-related. It would have been much better COVID-related early on, because we've used it for the EOC.
Right.
But if our future plan, so it's kind of iffy, but we could, we could use it, because they do have plans to do that before the end of December. That's why it's still on the list. We're still watching that one.
Got it.
Okay. Back to the kind of drop dead date for projects going forward or not before the end of the year. Would you be comfortable with Friday, December 4th, or Monday, December 7th, as?
Friday, December 4th, sounds like a good date.
Okay.
That, that, it's the end of the week, and decision should be made by then.
Okay.
That sounds good.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Mary? Mary, none? Thank you, and appreciate the level of detail and the investigation of projects. And hopefully, between the state and the federal government, there will be another round of help. But that's, at this point, that's a wish, not something that can be put in the budget. So we keep hoping.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. This was a real thorough investigation, and I appreciate it.
All right.
I will work through our community partners and let them know that we're going to proceed with it. Thank you.
Great. Next up, 4.5, review of 4500 Research Way Floor Plan Options. We have Gary Stockoff and Paul Wallslinger.
Good morning. It's me again.
Okay.
So I just wanted to, I think, first of all, this morning, I think you have a couple of layouts that are in your handouts today. And if you need to see more, if I could just be made presenter, I'd be glad to put those up on the screen. I think what I just want to do, first of all, is just review the new plan. I think this is Plan Revision 25, 26, somewhere in there. But with the Pfizer Corporation showing their, their intent to stay in the building through the end of their lease, that puts us back to focusing on Phase 1, which is the drawings that you have in front of you today. And I'm coming to the board today to ask permission to take this phase, or Phase 1, roughly drawn as you see. The plan that's in front of you is just my version of how the departments will fit into the space. What I'd like to do now is to turn this back over to the DLR group and have them go out for a second set of test fits with the departments, so that we can then take this layout, fit it to structure, look at value engineering, and, you know, all of those sort of complicated architectural and engineering things. And then work this particular plan to a set of 80% drawings that we can then get priced, and perhaps even lead into a construction plan with Gertie Construction. While we're working on Phase 1, we are still working on Phase 2. That has not died. We're still working on what departments are going to go into Phase 2, and what their general layout would look like in Phase 2. And I think we're actually very close to meeting that marker as well. It's going to be a timeline of mine to try and, it's going to be a timeline of mine to try and have Phase 2 laid out with prints, because we're still going to have to go to the contractor to get Phase 2 priced, so that we can go to the capital committee for those funds to finish that part of Phase 2. And like I said, I think we're getting very close on Phase 2. But just here today, I kind of just want to focus on Phase 1. So on my screen, I have the first floor, which is now the vacant side of the building, which for the most part occupies the Board of Commissioners' office and those secondary functions that are sort of continuing to grow with the Board of Commissioners' office. And then one, the Board's meeting room, and then a large storage area that we're going to break apart, so that each one of the departments in the building has a small, a small bit of document and equipment storage. Any questions on first floor?
No.
Don't see any, Paul.
All right, moving on. So I got a lot of plans here. All right, then, so the second floor, there was really only one small change to the second floor, and that was moving clerk and elections to the second floor. This has been reviewed by- This has been reviewed by James and by Darla. They agree that this space will work. You know, they're not 100% with the layout, and that's why you don't see any hard walls in there. And then still maintaining the assessor. And the thought process is that then moves the Clerk and Elections out of the basement area of the courthouse, which is going to open up room for the District Attorney's Office and give us a little bit of breathing room on that front. Any questions with the layout of the second floor of Phase One?
I have one question. So I know that the Clerk's office and Elections doesn't have that many staff on an ongoing basis, but at election time, their staff balloons. So I'm assuming that the space allocation has taken that into account and that there will be sufficient space for Elections staffing?
It has. We're really looking at them on a very, on a super flexible basis. And as you pointed out, just because of the nature of their business, they go from, you know, eight people to 50 people, back to eight people pretty quickly. And right now, their process stream for processing ballots is really a nightmare. It's all over the place. It goes from this room to this room to this room. And I've been down there. I've spent a lot of time with Elections and the Clerk. I was even down there yesterday, seeing it in full swing. And that is probably the key part of their layout is trying to come up with some sort of a process stream so that, you know, the ballots land at the loading dock, come up the elevator, you know, go to signature verification and work their way through the process, you know, to an end storage on the other side.
Okay, excellent. I'm really glad that you're working through that with them to think about most efficient and effective way to allocate space for them.
Indeed.
And I think integrity of the process is really important.
Absolutely.
So, Paul, it sounds like Pfizer is going to be in the Phase Two space till the end of September next year. Is the idea to get Phase One started?
Yeah, that's the current intent that they've articulated to us. I think if I was a betting man, and let me put my shaky reputation on the line here, they're still working on moving their servers out of this building. That'll be sometime around the first quarter of 2021 where they'll complete that. It's going to be around that point where they're finally going to realize that they're paying a lot of money for an empty building. And I would expect them to come back to the county looking to make some sort of a deal. But right now, I just really believe that they're quagmire in their own administrative process, and they don't even see the money that they're losing the way that we see it. So it's going to take the removal of the servers to probably initiate that.
Okay. I mean, I drive past there and I see two cars or three cars. So I think your timetable makes a lot of sense, so.
Yeah, I'm at a complete loss, you know, why they wouldn't want to come to the county now to work on a deal, but they continue to pay their rent, so there's that.
Yeah, if that's our worst case scenario, we're in pretty good shape.
Agreed.
Okay, any other questions or comments about 4500?
So we haven't looked at the second floor yet, have we?
Oh.
Didn't we?
This is the second floor that I have.
Oh, yeah, that is the second floor, okay. So assessment is the other piece of it. And then Phase Two is what I was thinking, not second floor.
Yeah, and then Phase Two.
And Phase Two.
And really, I think we're very close on Phase Two. We're just working on adjacencies, how people interact and work within the different departments, and just a little bit of space allocation, making sure that we're, you know, taking a really thoughtful approach of who goes into the building and that we're not, you know, shoehorning departments in, we're not overcrowding early. And that's really important to me. If we overcrowded, it's like buying an outdated laptop, you know. You know, it was finished the day you picked it up, so we don't want to be in that.
We've already done that. We don't need to do it again. We, so I did notice that Juvenile is not in this plan any longer, so it's, I'm assuming, staying right here in the Sunset Building.
They are still a player for Phase Two. We're just still trying to figure out exactly how they play into the building with a fairly long list of requirements that they have, security, C-GAS, and HIPAA, you know, all of those acronyms.
Got it. Okay, I see where they are now. Okay. And are you simultaneously thinking about space here in the Sunset Building as you work on this?
We are. We just kind of started talking about that. So as people, as departments move into the 4500 building, what we're going to start doing in the vacuum that that creates as departments move over. So those discussions have just started.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, if there's no further questions for Paul, I would entertain a motion.
All right.
On page 83.
83. I have to get to page 83.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Ooh, gone.
Yep, I lost it.
I just, I move to approve Public Works to proceed with the 80% design on Phase One of the 4500 Research Way project.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Well, looking forward to more updates, Paul. This is an exciting project, and I appreciate your work on this. And you use the word adjacency. Is that a real word, Paul? I've used it in Scrabble before.
Yes, it's a real word.
It's a real word. You're okay.
It's a real word, and I'll admit, it was a real word that I had not heard until this project started.
I had not heard it either, so, but it describes what you're doing, so that's great. Okay?
All right, well, thank you, Commissioners. I really appreciate it. And then, like I said, the next step of this is we're going to engage DLR to start working with the departments on the finalized test fit, and we'll be back with initial floor plans as soon as we have them.
Thank you.
Well, and the other thing this shows is we're able to keep our projects moving forward in spite of COVID and whatever else is heading our way. And this is encouraging, and it's a very important project for the county. So looking forward to more updates, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next up is Item Five, the Consent Calendar. And we are removing 5.1, and so it's just approval of the minutes.
I think 5.1 stays. It's just, no?
No. Charlie asked yesterday if it would be removed, and so it will be staying on for another few weeks.
Oh, I did not know that.
Actually, a recent change based on failed recruitment.
Oh, I did not know that.
So.
Okay.
Well, I'll move the consent calendar without a specific one.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved. Item Six, Proclamations. 6.1, in the matter of proclaiming November American Indian and Alaskan Native Heritage Month in Benton County.
Before the Board of County Commissioners for the State of Oregon and for the County of Benton, in the matter of proclaiming.
November American Indian and Alaskan Native Heritage Month in Benton County. It's proclamation number P-2020-017. In the past, many First Americans inhabited the area now known as Benton County. These include the bands of the Long Tom, the Labiam, the Shapofana, the Salamila, Krikatot, Sulets, Kalapuya, Alsee, and others. The State of Oregon recognizes nine Confederate tribes in Oregon, of which the Confederate tribes of Sulets and the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron have close ties. I just lost that. What happened to it? Excuse me. Pardon me. It keeps disappearing.
Page 129.
I don't have that up, but I just had this document up, and it just went away. So, okay. The State of Oregon recognizes nine Confederate tribes in Oregon, of which Confederate tribes of Sulets and the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron have close ties to Benton County. Each tribe has made extraordinary contributions to Oregon and the Pacific Northwest region, as well as internationally, in agriculture, medicine, music, language, art, and other areas. American Indians and Alaskan Natives are also recognized for their individual sacrifices, serving in the armed forces, as local and national leaders, artists, athletes, and scholars. Benton County recognizes and values the contributions of American Indians and Alaskan Natives to our communities. Therefore, be it proclaimed that November is American Indian and Alaskan Native Heritage Month in Benton County, and all residents are encouraged to join in the observation. And I would make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Annabelle.
You're welcome. I must have moved my mouse and it disappeared.
All right. Next up, 6.2. In the matter of proclaiming November 11th, 2020 is Veterans Day. And I have Molly Murphy going to present this. Are you there, Molly?
I don't see her.
All right.
I don't see her on here.
I can.
All right, I can read it, if you like.
Okay.
In the matter of proclaiming November 11th as Veterans Day in Benton County, proclamation 2020019. The United States Congress has provided that November 11th of each year shall be set aside as a public holiday to honor veterans. With respect for and in recognition of the contributions our servicemen and women have made, we urge all Americans to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans. And the Officers at Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments and residents of Lynn Benton and Lincoln Counties have the deepest gratitude toward all veterans and honors the commitment and courage of the many people who have served in the armed forces. And the Officers at Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments particularly extends its heartfelt gratitude and goodwill to the Oregon National Guard members and the personnel of all armed services currently serving in the Middle East and elsewhere who have earned the respect and admiration of a grateful nation. Now, therefore, the Officers at Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments proclaim November 11th, 2020 as the day set aside for honoring our veterans and their families and for holding activities in observance of their contribution to our community, our state, and our nation. And I would also like to mention in this regard that the contribution that we made to the City of Philomath for their inclusivity series this month, Colonel Greg Gadson will be here on November 10th to speak to the community about his service. And that will be available to all by tuning in to the City of Philomath on Facebook at 6:00 PM on November 10th.
All right. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve proclamation 2020019.
I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. And I'll point out that November 10th is a week from today, and November 11th, Veterans Day, is a week from tomorrow, so.
The only other thing I would point out is that if people aren't aware of it that are watching possibly on Facebook is that the Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments provides veteran services for Benton County on contract, and that's why the proclamation was written in such a way that it reflects Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments.
Also, Commissioners, a reminder that the county is closed on that day in observance of Veterans Day. All right. Next up, item number 7.1, Discussion and Decision to Impose Traffic Control at the Intersection of Park Road and Dawson Road, Laurel Byer.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, indeed.
Loud and clear.
All right, thumbs up. So, yes, I'm here today to talk to you about several different things, but the first one on the order is a stop sign installation at the intersection of Park Road and Dawson Road. And Park actually is a loop. It starts out paved, but then goes to gravel and then connects back into Dawson. And at that gravel intersection, there is no stop sign. And a member of the public called us and said, hey, you need to replace it. And we looked into it. Turned out, we never had a stop sign there, but it is really justified for the manual uniform traffic control devices. It gives us some meaning to see on where we install stop signs. And from my perspective, I think it's a good idea to have a stop sign where gravel road intersects asphalt. And so that's why we brought this to you today. Do you have any questions about that?
Nope.
Not at all.
I would move to approve the order for imposing traffic control at the intersection of Park Road and Dawson Road, County Road Number 45200.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. A shiny new stop sign.
All right, yes.
Number Eight, New Business. 8.1, Discussion and Decision to Approve the Notice of Intent for Applying for Funding Through Community Pass Program for Maintenance on the MLK to Ponderosa Multi-Use Path, Laurel Byer.
Yes, thank you again. Here we are talking about grants. So the State of Oregon, Oregon Department of Transportation, has a new program that's kind of evolved from the Connect Oregon program for bicycle and pedestrian improvements, and it's called a Community Pass Grant. And it is really specifically for paths that are outside the right-of-way or are part of a community regional path. So our, and I don't know if you remember, but we talked about last spring using some funds from the General Fund to do some path maintenance, because a lot of these paths, there was a huge bicycle bond back in the 80s, and there were several paths constructed around the city of Prowlus and Benton County and the cities of Philomath. And those paths haven't really had proper maintenance since that time. And we definitely, we get complaints about specifically the one over by the fairgrounds, Bitch Kramer, but then also the Ponderosa Pass that goes from MLK Park up to Ponderosa was initially constructed in concrete. And so it has cracked and has not been, we tried to do some crack sealing of the concrete, but it's not very effective. And so this new path grant opportunity can be used towards maintenance. It's not just construction and new paths, so that was a bonus for us. And then also, since it is outside of a county road right-of-way, then we can look at utilizing this funding to actually maintain the path. Potentially, we talked about actually tearing out all the concrete and putting all new asphalt in, but we're going to, that would be something that we would look at during the grant application process to refine it better. And then if we get approval from the state, first they ask for a notice of intent, like a letter of intent, saying, yes, we plan on applying for this grant funding request. And then the state will get back to us and either have questions or say, well, no, this doesn't really fit. And then that's when we move forward. The actual, the grant application due date is January 31st of 2021. So are there any questions on that one?
I think this one is a fantastic candidate for this funding pot. We've known for a while that it needs to be addressed, and I'd love to see it transferred to the city. to the city of Corvallis, since it is now all fully within city limits.
Yes, agreed. It's completely surrounded by the city now, so it would be nice if we could transfer it, so.
And I just want to add that we received a tort claim notice relating to somebody who actually fell on that pathway. The tort claim notice is far too late. It's not, it's not going to be an issue for Benton County, but it does underscore the condition of that path. I also want to point out that with that, there's a fairly large new subdivision going in that backs onto this path, and I want to say they have one, maybe two pathways onto this path. So, the sooner that that walkway pathway can be fixed, I think the easier we'll all breathe with regard to potential availability.
All right. And there's matching dollars involved in this grant, federal at ten percent and state at thirty percent, and we're gonna monitor, or does the state decide which pot of money that the grant applies to?
Yes, they do. The state will look at, so for instance, this one, since it was a bicycle bond, it's probably not federal dollars involved, so I'm thinking the state funding could go towards this particular project. And so I think it would be that thirty percent match. But the positive about that is we still look at FEMA and/or threatened endangered species, but it's less, less, I guess is what I would say. And we're able to actually advance the project sooner if we use state funds versus federal funds. Federal funds just add a whole nother layer of requirements and review.
So, it's a trade-off between the amount of matching funds and the amount of staff time required in order to get the lower matching fund rate, so that's what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I would be happy to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Okay.
I move to approve the notice of intent to apply for funding through the Community Paths Program for Maintenance of the Martin Luther King Junior to Ponderosa Avenue Multi-Use Path.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right. Next up, eight point two.
To the next one.
Discussion and decision to approve the notice of intent for applying for funding through the Community Pass Program for Maintenance of the Corvallis to Albany Path, Conifer to Merloy segment. So.
Yes, so as I mentioned in my previous discussion about the Community Pass Grant Program, it is available to be spent on regional paths, which the Corvallis Albany Bike Way is and has been in process. This particular piece of the path has been kind of moving forward over the past couple of years. Myself, I've been directly working with the Department of Transportation staff as they're doing their design on the Highway twenty safety improvement. We're also looking at the Corvallis Albany Bike Way or path and how it can actually fit with those improvements and making sure that it isn't forgotten. We are looking at right now, the contractor or the consultant is supposed to be getting a plan soon, excuse me, for the path. And they are, we're planning on having a plan complete, so that way we can look at right-of-way acquisition and any utility relocation that we have to do at the same time as the US twenty project. So that way, we're actually coordinating our efforts, and it's not, oh, here comes the state looking for right-of-way, oh, and now the county ones, son, wait, what? What's going on? So, we're gonna try to do it as a team, even though they're separately funded. And so this Community Pass Grant is really a great opportunity to hopefully get us some construction funding, so that way we can look at building this portion from Conifer to Merloy in a similar timeframe as when the state is doing construction, either just before them, which is in twenty twenty-two, is their goal right now. So, twenty twenty-two, if we can get some additional funding for construction for the Conifer to Merloy section, then we would try to do it before the state starts tearing up the highway, is the goal anyways. You know, in a perfect world, it'd be great if we can get the same contractor and all gets built at the same time, but I think that's gonna be pretty difficult to do, given the state's requirements and our requirements are just slightly different, so. And this one, this path, though, has had federal funding involved, and so therefore it will need to be federalized, and so it'll be that ten percent match. Since it's adjacent to a road right-of-way, even though we're just acquiring an easement, we're not actually purchasing right-of-way, we're acquiring an easement, we can use road dollars to use, or to apply to the match, is what I'm trying to say. So, that's the difference between these two. Any questions?
I'm just glad to see that there's progress being made.
Finally.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are moving forward. It's such a slow process. Yeah.
Well, I would hope that the long history of this path maybe helps with our application, that this is
Right.
long overdue.
Yes. It has a lot of support, so I think that's gonna be huge towards the grant application, so.
Great.
Well, are you ready for a motion?
Yep.
I will move to approve the notice of intent applying for funding through the Community Paths Program for Maintenance of the Corvallis Albany Path from Conifer to Merloy.
I think it's construction instead of maintenance in this case, but yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be construction.
Yeah, that's wrong, that's right.
Okay.
I was thinking maintenance.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Okay.
All right.
Good.
Next up, eight point three. Discussion and decision to approve the notice of intent for applying for funding for bridge rehabilitation and replacement through the local bridge program. Laurel Byer.
Yes, it must be grant season.
Your honor.
They're all due about the same time.
Your honor, your honor, your honor, roll.
Yes. It was, yeah, I must have, you know, done an improper cut and paste when I did the last motion instead of maintenance. So, anyway, so notice of intent for the local agency bridge program, these come out like one thirty-three years, and this is how we've been able to fund, we were granted funding for the Hubbard Road Bridge Replacement Project, which is currently under design. So, they have opened up another round, and this is for fiscal years twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-seven, so we have to think forward a little bit. But what we've done so far, so first of all, originally, this was due October fifteenth, but they extended the grant deadline to November sixteenth. And what we usually do is we work with the consultants and figure out what do we want to do with each bridge. So, you know, we look at the sufficiency rating. If it's under fifty, then the state will apply funds towards replacement. But if it's between fifty and eighty, then you have to look at rehabilitation. And so what we did is we went through our existing bridges and did kind of a ranking of them based upon the scoring system that ODOT will use, and picked out a handful, six bridges. Last time, we applied for three, and actually, we're lucky enough to get funding for all three. So, we're still kind of in a preliminary situation right now, even though we've identified six bridges, I don't know that we're actually gonna apply for all of them, just because usually what we'll do is we'll focus on the ones that need replacement first. So, for instance, the Muddy Creek Bridge, actually, there's several Muddy Creek Bridges, but on McFarland, there's one on Dawson, and also one on Airport, that we would look at trying to get money for replacing those, rather than spending money on rehab. The other one that's very important probably is on Elliot Circle. You see that sufficiency rating is only twenty-two, and that's kind of scary. And I think that's functionally obsolete, it's a timber bridge. Like, most of these bridges were built in the fifties, sixties, and they're just due to be replaced. And so this local agency bridge program is very important for us to be able to get funding to actually do this, where it would take us years to be able to save this kind of money and actually have a bridge replacement program. And so the, like I said, these are very, very important for us to be able to kind of pick them off one by one and prioritize them. Do you want me to go into more detail on any of the bridges? I kind of lumped the agenda items together, just because like right now, I'm not completely sure we're moving all these bridges forward, but I wanted that opportunity if we did decide that it was key to do now, so.
Question I had is, is there a designated pot of money for these projects at this time, or is that to be arranged in the future?
So, no, there is a designated funding through the state, and they probably take it from the feds as well, but it's designated funding that's just for these local bridge programs. So, there will be, just like any other programs, there's probably limitations on how many projects they can fund. That's why we go through this process of scoring them and ranking them. The state will actually come out and scope each of the projects, and then they'll whittle down from a hundred and fifty percent list down to a hundred percent list, based upon, you know, their projections for the money that's coming in. But it is a dedicated program.
Okay.
Laurel, I have one more question for you on these bridges. Just given my past work with Mary's River Watershed Council, have you looked at any of these crossings from the perspective of fish passage and whether or not any of the abutments need to be shifted and any of the bridges extended a bit in order to improve habitat?
I haven't looked specifically at these bridges yet, as far as if anything needs to be shifted, but we definitely look at that in the design of all of our creek crossings, river crossings. For instance, the Hubbard Bridge project, we've had to go in and look at, you know, we can't really span one and a half times the channel width, because, you know, the Long Tom, that's a three-hundred-foot
Yeah.
bridge anyways. So, but it's something that we look at as we go through our environmental, our permits, our processes, to make sure that the design actually meets fish passage requirement as much as we can. And so we look at upgrading those bridges as we go.
Yeah.
We also make them wider, because right now, a lot of our bridges are pretty narrow, so we try to add additional width. And I know that the farming community appreciates that for sure, because they can, you know, actually maneuver their way across the bridges a little easier.
Yeah, equipment has gotten larger, not smaller, over time, that's for sure, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, this looks like, I'm really happy to see this work happening. We've been talking about bridges that need either repair or replacement for quite a long time. It's nice to see a pot of funds coming through, which will allow us to do another bunch of work on them.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, if there's no more questions, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the notice of intent to apply for funding through the local bridge program for the following bridges. Muddy Creek on McFarland Road, Muddy Creek Overflow on Dawson Road, Beaver Creek on Beaver Creek Road, Oak Creek on Northwest Oak Creek Drive, Small Creek on Northeast Elliot Circle, and Muddy Creek on Airport Road.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Well, thank you, Laurel.
Oh, thank you. Now, I gotta go and type up some grant applications.
Yay.
Thank you so much.
Bye-bye. All right. Next up, eight point four. Discussion, decision to approve order number D twenty twenty dash zero eight seven. Authorizing the Use of Sole Source Exception for New Communication System for the Benton County Jail. John Devaney, I think, is with us to talk about this issue.
Okay, so basically, we were notified earlier this year that the legacy of the phone system that we've been using for a number of years, last contract I could find was from like two thousand and sixteen, that they were no longer doing inmate phone services. They were completely getting out of the business by the end of the year, and they actually took about a month and a half to just start passing us off to a separate, different company. So, we reached out to a bunch of the different, I reached out to the jail commanders in the state, said, okay, who's, what systems are you guys currently using? Got a list of three predominant systems that they're using, and then we added on the one system that Legacy had automatically kicked over to. We had everybody come out, provide us, or we tried to get everybody to come out, provide us a little demonstration, and we actually had three of the companies I reached out to provide us. One has not responded with a proposal or a contract, and the two that did, one was far superior technology-wise, actually provides a lot more support for our investigation side of the house, and provides tablets for the inmates to be able to use at a lower rate than what we're even charging right now for a phone call. We did make sure that in this thing, in this contract, there is no commission to the sheriff's office or to Benton County, so they were able to provide a lot of these services and like interfaces and stuff like that, they're willing to pay for all that. The company that we chose, which is, or that we're presenting on today, which is IC Solutions, there was, the other company just didn't have the availability of the tablets, and, you know, especially during the whole COVID thing, we found that only having solely visiting in person is somewhat problematic and not having that additional opportunity for folks. So, we believe that this is the best option and truly the only option for us, as far as if we want to get everything that we're trying to get for both our staff and for the adults in custody here.
So, go ahead.
Let me just jump in and add a little bit more. So, under our county contracting code, there is an opportunity for departments to utilize sole source exemption. Without sole source exemption, there are processes, depending on the value of the contract, that we have to follow. It is not common for us to utilize sole source, simply because it doesn't really arise that often. This is one of those cases where it does, when John put together his list of components and attributes that a new system needed to have, interface, I think he touched on transcripts. The detectives would utilize the phone system to generate transcripts quickly and accurately. We'd get new, we'd get new equipment, which we don't have to fund. There was only one provider that provided the elements of the system that the jail had designed, and that is IC Solutions, right, John? I always get, there are a couple of them in there that only had initials, so I had to make sure I got the right letters, ICS, IC Solutions. So, so again, our code asks that if a department is seeking a sole source, it come to you for approval.
And is IC Solutions the vendor that Legacy passed you to?
They're not. The company that Legacy passed us to is called NTIC, and they won't even have a first-generation type of tablet until at least next year. They did not have transcripts for detectives, they did not have nearly the investigative tools, which, when we decided to go forward with this, when we had all the companies come out for them, we had IP come over, we had our facilities maintenance come, we had our detectives come over, to talk to them, to see what the presentations were, and it was pretty much in agreement that what we were looking for, the only provider that responded to us, was IC Solutions for all those things.
And will the cost to inmates for a call increase, or decrease, or stay the same?
It's gonna, it's gonna decrease quite a bit for the call, and the cost for even the video call that they'll be able to do now will be less than what we pre, what we're charging Legacy, because we're not going for commission, and we were able to lower those rates for the adults in custody, so.
I'm very happy to hear that, and I'm also very glad that we've chosen to drop the commission. I understand that it wasn't a huge revenue stream, and it seems much more equitable to the inmates to not be making money off of them when they can't be earning anything themselves.
Well, and it does make a big difference when the provider is actually providing the equipment.
Yes.
So, so they have already built in the cost for the equipment, and we don't have to either fork over the extra money for the equipment or charge, collect the commission, which when then we turn around and get the equipment.
Yeah.
So, it really does. It really does benefit three ways, the vendor, Benton County, and the inmates, or adults in custody. I gotta get used to that one, John.
And it's difficult. And technically, for the definition, we definitely don't have adults in custody here, because it's only really for sentence people. And those are the folks that we always ship up to North Shore that hold our sentence folks. But that just provided a general description that everybody in the state's going with, for everybody to think custody or whether they're sentenced or not.
Just more syllables.
Yes, it is.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
No. I would happily move to approve Order D 2020 087, authorizing the use of a sole source exemption to the process as described in Benton County Code 2.275 to contract with IC Solutions for a new communication system for the Benton County Jail.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right. 8.5, Discussion and Decision to Approve Notice of Intent for Applying for Funding through FEMA for the National Hazard Mitigation Plan. Brian Lee.
Yes. Good morning, the GAN commissioners. So this thing is actually kind of different. We, every five years, we are required to do a natural hazard mitigation plan overhaul. And that's our formal update. And we receive certain available funds through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which is only available if a state has a presidential level declaration. We have to have a FEMA approved Hazard Mitigation Plan, and we're going to be eligible for those funds. Those funds can be used to basically do improvements that would mitigate natural hazards. We can't do new construction, but we can improve on existing construction that has been identified in that plan. So the intent of the plan is really to outline shovel-ready projects and priority lists for every jurisdiction or special district in our county. That list can then be used to then get, obviously, capital improvement funds or hazard mitigation funds as they become available. And that's the overall intent of it. We took a good hard look at it previously. There was a contractor that wrote the plan. It's, it's actually okay, but we want to kind of get a little bit more out of the plan. We are staying in the contract with the Department of Land.
Conservation and Development.
Conservation and Development, the state level. So this letter of intent is actually just saying that we agree we'll contribute 25% match, namely in-kind labor, by the name of Ciara, myself, Inga, and a few other folks around on the city of Corralis side as well, to basically put our time into this project and help them develop the plan. I've spoken with a lot of other emergency managers around the state, and they said they get a very good job on their plans. And they don't just do boiler templates kind of planning. They do a really comprehensive approach, which appealed to us greatly. That said, we are kind of a sub-retributor. So the official recipient of the Hazard Mitigation funding project would be the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And then we are subcontracting through them. And we won't actually really touch the money. We just have to do the in-kind match piece. So that's why this letter and this grant is a little bit different than most. But we still need to submit this letter of intent to apply. But after we submit this letter of intent, once we get the approval to all processes, we will then have a, an IGA, in the governmental agreement that we have to have, signed off, of course, by the Board of Commissioners, to then move forward into the final phases and actually work on the project itself. The rough timeline for this one, it should be due to the state on November 20th, and we should give back from the federal government on the approvals, no later than early January, and then the project could initiate shortly thereafter. So we estimate by March or April timeline to then begin the planning process again. And again, this is tied to a lot of other funding as well that our plan is up to date and accurate.
All right. Any questions for Brian?
That was a really thorough description.
Yeah.
So that's great. And I'm happy to hear about the strong collaboration between community development and your Office of Emergency Management and others in the city to move this work forward.
And I do want to say on that similar note, we were planning on including the CWPP, or Community Wildfire Protection Plan, in this update as well. I talked with the GLCD as well as ODS at length, and they strongly encouraged us to just do the update ourselves. And talking with Gary and Greg and Inga, our goal is to have a very community-focused engagement process.
Yes.
So we go out to rural communities, host a meeting, get their feedback on these priority projects. And that plan will plug in directly to this Hazard Mitigation Plan we're developing. So they all tie together, and they reference each other a lot. So I want to do this process hand in hand. So Ciara and I will be engaged in the CWPP update in parallel with this Hazard Mitigation Plan with the contractors in the state.
So that will allow you more flexibility in terms of the community wildfire protection planning. But at the same time, you can take advantage of all the public meetings and input that are being generated by the larger Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan?
Yes, yes, exactly.
Okay.
And, and the goal there, of course, is on the Community, Community Wildfire Protection Plan side, ODS is the main recipient of those funds. And I just, I want a little bit tighter list of, as I always describe it, shovel-ready projects. So that way, when this funding becomes available to us again, or any funds are available for evacuation routes or other brush clearing activities that we can help support, either through direct funding or indirect funding, I want that list ready to go. And I want the community to have really engaged in multiple meetings and dialogue about that. So that way, we're really serving their, their needs and their purposes, and not just putting it on the paper and ODS doing their piece. Because I know they're stretched thin as well and very distracted. We actually don't have a CWPP planner assigned to our county right now. It's kind of the other duty has assigned for someone out of the Polk County office, since Allison Blair took a job out in Donday. So that adds to a little bit of our, I guess, urgency, for lack of a better word.
Yeah.
To make sure this is done well. So.
That sounds great. I think we need to not leave state and federal funds on the table when it comes to these kinds of shovel-ready projects. And this sounds like what we need to have in place to be able to do that. So I would move to approve the notice of intent to apply for the letter, for the letter for the National Hazard Mitigation Plan Grant Program, federal funding through FEMA.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, Brian. And next up, item number nine, other. Do you have any other business?
So I would ask the board can, when you're done with your regular meeting, if we can move into executive session.
Yep. That's the plan.
And are we going to have an opportunity to have a, a planning meeting again for information? Because as we're getting closer to time for the legislature, I have a couple of things I want to talk to, but we can talk to it at another time.
Okay.
And we do have a legislative breakfast?
Sorry.
We have a legislative breakfast this Saturday?
Yeah. The only other alternative, which it's not prior to the legislative breakfast, is a goal setting next week.
Oh, I'm not sure this piece is ready for that. It has to do with the user fee. So it's not quite boiled yet. But I think that's something we have to put on our plate to look at. But we, we can do that at a further, further down the road.
It sounds like it would be good to have Public Works input on that as well.
Yeah. Actually, Gary, Gary's on those calls. So.
Okay. Any, any other others?
Other than to encourage any last people out there that haven't voted yet to vote?
Uh, yeah.
Today's the day.
So Vance, logistically, will be disconnecting from our go-to meeting, and then we'll be going into executive session, correct?
Correct. So we will recess out of the board meeting. And during the recess, we will disconnect from go-to. Mary Ottley should be coming down, joining us. Then we will connect Teresa via speakerphone, so she can be our recorder. And then we will resume the board meeting in exec session via speakerphone.
So we, we leave?
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Yeah. Teresa's on it.
We'll want to go ahead and recess, Commissioner.
Yep.
Okay. Couple minute recess while we leave one meeting and get ready for the executive session.